Good evening and welcome to the November 20th Regular School Board Meeting. Thank you all for attending. I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Denise, in a second. Heather, thank you. I do have one change from my end. I would like to take the Moheramit 4th Grade presentation and move it to directly after we approve this agenda. Okay? Does anyone else have a change to the agenda? It's already on there. And we will be having a non-meeting session after the school board meeting. Okay. All in favor of the amended agenda? Six in favor, none opposed. Okay. At this point, I'd like to turn it over.
Thank you. It's with great pleasure that I asked David Goldsmith to come up and to introduce our 4th graders and our educators that have been working with the 4th graders on an integrated project-based learning opportunity. Thank you, David.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith from Moheramit. I am quite honored and excited to welcome our Moheramit teachers and students here. They're going to be talking to you about an integrated collaborative project that they worked on. I'm really just the introducer. This is all their work. And we have six 4th graders here to talk to you from their perspective about what they did, how they did it, and why this was a great experience for them. I'm going to talk a little bit in the beginning, and then I'm going to introduce everybody, and they're going to explain to you everything that's going on. I do want to say that this is not the first year that the 4th grade has done this project, but it is the fourth iteration of this project. It is a continual process of, as it should be, I think, in education, of reflection, evolution, change, growth. And you'll hear from the staff what they've done to work collaboratively, some of the professional development that they've attended that has helped influence what they're doing. And then lastly, connected to you all, this connects to a sabbatical that's happening in the spring that I'm excited about. It's an elementary school sabbatical that Sarah Curtin, our digital learning specialist, is going to focus on integrated project-based learning. And so the big hope, of course, is that that sabbatical will enrich Sarah's professional learning, and then also come back to us and to everyone in the district around opportunities and options for project-based and integrated collaborative learning. Those aren't exactly the same thing. I won't get into the details, but you'll hear all of those things. So here we go. We're missing... Oh, you want to do that?
Good evening. My name's Sarah Curtin. I'm the Digital Learning Specialist at Moheramit, and I am going to be on sabbatical second semester, so thank you for the support. Integrated learning, project-based learning, and inquiry-based learning are terms that we throw around a lot in education, and we use them interchangeably. And part of my sabbatical will be to define those and take a deep dive into the integrated learning. And at its core, integrated learning focuses on building connections across disciplines. And this approach involves educators collaborating to bundle curriculum standards, creating opportunities for students to engage in real-world, authentic learning experiences to maximize their learning.
One of the things, of course, that we do when we're creating work in our school and experiences for our students is we try to ground it in the very mission of our district. And I think our hope is that as you hear this presentation and learn from our students and our staff, you'll see that this is a great example of the collaborative working together of all of our staff in this project and the students, and how they were very engaged throughout the whole thing. In terms of working together, Emily Randall is here as one of our 4th grade teacher representatives. Of course, the entire 4th grade team has been working on this. Our library media specialist, Chris Hall, who is new to, not new to the district, but new to Moheramit, and was able to jump right in and join the team and continue what they had been working on for many years and continue to evolve it and take part. Of course, Sarah Curtin, our digital learning specialist. And Ellen Irvin, our math and science specialist, was really able to bring a lot of those science connections from our classrooms into the other parts of it and really tie the whole thing together. So it really is an example of working together to engage every learner. And we have encore teachers who also connect with these programs. And in this case, our art teacher, Tricia Hall, helped our students in some of the drawings that they needed to do to conceptualize their learning and their work. And you'll see, I believe, an example of some of that drawing as well. There is collaboration going on at all of the levels in our school. This is one example of it. It is, I think, the largest collaborative project that we have going, but I could explain to you that this is happening at every grade level, which is very exciting.
Hello, I'm Ellen Irvin, the math and science specialist at Moheramit. Before we go much further, we want you to get a picture of what our study of renewable energy was like at school. This slide shows the different phases of the learning process that we move through during our work on renewable energy: exploring and engaging investigations, listening to local experts, using coding to create a model of a renewable energy source, while also continually asking questions and doing research to deepen our learning. Annalise and Cory will talk about their experiences.
Hello. My name is Annalise. This unit started with us working in small groups to explore and learn about three sources of renewable energy: hydro, solar, and wind power. For each of these investigations, we used volt meters to measure the amount of power produced. We changed one variable at a time. For example, the angle of the solar panels for solar power, the number of blades used on a wind turbine, and the height of a bucket of water draining onto a turbine. All of this was fun because the groups got to make decisions about how we would set things up and how we would change variables to try to produce more power. We also got to use real equipment: volt meters, wind turbines, different kinds of lights, turbines, solar panels, and generators. While we were learning, we had community experts visit and share what they did and helped us learn more about renewable power. They encouraged us to think big.
Hi, my name is Cory. As a part of this, we built with Legos, and my hydro group built the Lego dam. This wasn't just a Lego set. We designed the dam ourselves. When we made it with a dam, we put a little hole in it, and then we put an upside-down motor to spin a turbine. This simulates what would happen if water were actually going through. We had to code the motor ourselves to make this all work. I liked this way of learning because you had a chance to try new things and test out your code. I had to try over and over to get this one motor to go in the spot I wanted it to go. And when it finally worked, I was so happy because it took me an entire session to do it. The research we did with Mr. Hall and investigations with wind, solar, and hydropower also helped us to understand what we were doing with the Lego build.
And then the share part of our process is happening this Friday, and you're all invited. It's Friday, November 22nd, from 9:15 to 10:15 at the Moheramit Library Learning Commons, and everyone's welcome to join us.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Hall, school librarian. As a longtime classroom teacher and now a library media specialist, I've seen many times when learning's done in silos, you know, like 45 minutes of math here, then 45 minutes of language arts, then science, then maybe off to a computer technology class. And each of our classes has dozens of standards, skills, and content that each teacher needs to address, of course. But rather than teach these in isolation, an integrated unit like this finds one common project to weave these together in a more unified way. This is powerful because it maximizes student learning time. For example, rather than me teaching research skills, Ms. Curtin teaching computer coding, maybe a language arts teacher teaching paragraph writing as separate lessons, we combine these with the classroom science teacher, like Ms. Randall's, content about renewable energy. But most importantly, this helps students see the big picture and the connections between seemingly different subjects. And it also gives students a rich, consistent experience across the grade level. It makes learning more powerful, authentic, meaningful, and frankly, fun for students. And it's fun for staff, too, and powerful for us, because we benefit from the synergy of putting our heads together and creating something greater than if we were working alone with our classroom doors closed. And with that, we want to talk a little about, for you to hear from the students, about the benefits of this kind of learning for students. It has many, and our 4th graders will tell you a bit more about each of these. So first up, Chloe, if you want to come up. Chloe will tell you about how it felt to work with different teachers on the same project, and how the varied types of work—hands-on, research, group decision-making, and also solo note-taking, for example—how those were all connected.
Hi, my name is Chloe. I think the energy project was interesting because we saw how we were actually able to make energy from wind. I like learning about renewable energy from more than just my classroom teacher because it helped me to get different perspectives. You also get to learn more things beyond what your classroom teacher might teach you. This was a different kind of learning than I have had in past grades. I've never learned about renewable energy sources before. I liked building the Legos with Ms. Curtin and figuring out how to motorize it. I also liked doing the research with Mr. Hall and how that information connected to our Lego building project. We even drew diagrams with our art teacher, Mrs. Hall. I did enjoy working with my group, but I also like working alone, which we were able to do when we made our mind maps.
Great. And next up is Henry, who will explain some of the problem-solving and the critical thinking that was required as students explored new information and learned to work together as a group.
Hi, my name is Henry. I thought it was very interesting to learn about all the different kinds of renewable energy, and I thought working with solar panels was awesome. I loved that we were able to try new things and make changes. This was new from what I've done before because we were learning about solar power and things like photovoltaics and photons, which I used to think was something confusing that NASA scientists use. When we were doing research, we had to think about the information we were learning and compare it to other sources, like when I was learning about how solar panels are becoming more efficient. It was fun to see the 4th grade teachers make the videos that the 4th grade teachers made for us to show us how to work better together. We also worked with our art teacher, Mrs. Hall, helped us create a diagram for our project so we could picture how a solar panel works.
Hi, my name is Emily Randall. I teach 4th grade at Moheramit. My colleagues and I have taught this unit collaboratively for the past four years, but we included new aspects after attending a summer workshop on project-based learning. It's important that our students become lifelong learners and see the connections between many subjects. We wanted students to receive feedback from an authentic audience, so we invited renewable energy experts from local companies like Revision Energy and Great River Hydro. To tie in social emotional skills, each group of three to four students created a team alliance listing what they value, like respect and kindness, the behaviors they want to see, like discussion and taking turns, and what they will try when they experience a conflict, using I-statements like "I feel annoyed when you don't take turns building Legos," to develop empathy and give clear feedback. We included team-building activities into our morning meetings, too. The way we structured the project was with a learning canvas. We laminated a poster with four sections: to-do, in-progress, review, and done. Each student wrote tasks on Post-Its and moved them along the different sections to mark their team's progress. It helped them to visualize how much they had left to do and what's been accomplished already. We are very proud of the improvements we make each year to this project. Owen will explain how we took notes during research and made Canvas slides.
Hi, my name is Owen. Our team made Canvas slides. Canvas is an app for adults and kids to make slides for presentations. We took blank slides and typed facts on them about pros, cons, how electricity is made, and the energy journey of solar power. It was hard because we were all trying to find the right words on our mind maps, which is when we worked with Mr. Hall to research solar energy. In his class, we watched Brain Pop videos and read articles about solar power. Our group underlined the important words and wrote dash facts. Now that our group learned a lot about solar energy, in the future, I can do research on topics I'm interested in more efficiently and know what sites to trust.
This project fosters perseverance, growth mindset, and inquiry. Students wrote questions they had about their energy sources before we began, many of which were answered during their research. They completed an activity called Chalk Talk, where students silently recorded their own facts and questions with one color marker per student on a large poster after having a few days to explore the resources on their own. You could see the flow of their team's thoughts building off each other, like a web, in all different colors by the end. They came away from Chalk Talk thinking more deeply about their energy source. Many projects in elementary school are fully teacher-led, but this one was different. We encouraged students to problem-solve, which included, involved perseverance and having a growth mindset when things didn't go as planned. Isha will tell you about something her group struggled with.
Hi, my name is Isha, and the challenge that our team faced was Spike Essential because we'd never done that type of coding before. Spike Essential is a coding app for kids to make cool buildings move. We persevered through this project, and it became easy for us to code. Our group used Lego bricks from the Spike kit to build a dam and a fish ladder. A dam is something that blocks the water from a river to make a reservoir. A turbine is something that spins inside the dam to make electricity. A fish ladder is for the fish to go upstream so they don't crash into the dam. We used two gears to make a Lego turbine move on the coding app. Since we never used Essential, we played around first with it and got used to it and started coding the turbine to spin. Once we finished, we were so happy since we all worked together to make a great dam.
Throughout the district, at all of our levels, we talk about a vision of a graduate. And the vision of a graduate work that we're hoping for, of course, as our students leave Oyster River, is really cemented through these 21st century learning expectations. And I think if you look at that list that we have up there of those seven learning expectations, you can see that this type of learning and this project specifically really gets at all of those expectations. Our students took part as effective communicators, as self-directed learners. They had to problem-solve. They had to persevere. They had to think creatively. Our teachers were collaborative. It was a really exciting project to watch evolve and to see this whole group collaborate and work together. Ms. Curtin, are you going to... We have an example of the project. Are you going to go up with them? You want to put it right in there? No, it's okay. We're good. Come over here.
When we created our Lego dam, we put a little hole in the dam and put an upside-down motor that I told you about earlier. And that spins the generator, which I can run it again. Yeah. And then after you spin it for a little bit, it will spin the carousel after generating the electricity. And as you can see, we do have a fish ladder. It just wasn't finished. We didn't have time to finish that, so... Yeah.
Let's hear you stay there. Yeah. Does anybody at the board have any questions for this terrific group of students and staff? Miss Day.
It's just, how long did this project take? Like, when did you start the project?
Chloe, come on up.
Well, it took him a while, maybe like two or three weeks, I think. So we kind of... Something like a lot. We started more towards the beginning of the year, and then we made it to here.
Sure. Two questions. What was the most surprising part of this process?
I think so. It was getting to meet many experts about the hydro, since we got to have a new perspective of it, and like people who actually worked with the dams and hydro, electricity.
Thank you.
Another thing that surprised me was how much information we could gather from just one site in a little bit of time.
Yeah. Second question is about what did you find the most challenging part of working together?
For my group, the hardest part was probably staying on task and deciding who did what.
At the end of the project, what we did was we were kind of arguing about who did the Canvas slides and who colored on the, like, that giant map. So what we did was we set a five-minute timer, and we did five minutes on one, and then we swapped every five minutes. And then we kept going and got the job done eventually. For me, it was probably, like, with some members of our group, they would, like, play around and add silly stuff onto the Canvas slide, which we kept having to delete.
Can somebody talk about the learning contracts that your groups had to help with those kinds of issues? What were the expectations that you made as a group, and how did you use those to keep the whole group focused? Chloe, you got something about that?
So the contract things were how we thought of a bunch of different behaviors and, like, core values that we think we should all respect. And then we kind of signed our names so that we knew we would follow those rules.
I think, Chloe, you said something about a mind map. Can one of you explain what that is and how you build one?
Mind map. Owen, can you talk mind map?
A mind map is kind of like, what we did was we worked with Mr. Hall, and we went on sites and researched stuff about solar energy. And then we looked at it, underlined the important facts, and then we added some extra words to make it a real sentence. And then we put it on the piece of paper, and we drew, like, some pictures along with it, and then it was done eventually.
Ms. Plechore.
I'm curious. I just wanted to hear from some of you all. What do you think the most important takeaway, or what takeaway do you think was most important to you from this project?
Most important takeaway? The thing you're going to remember the most, the thing that was coolest for you? Isha, what do you got?
I think so. It was getting to work with my team and coloring my map, like, the really big map. It was really fun since we all got to do it together and we get to all color the map.
One thing that I'm probably always going to remember about this is all the experts that came in. I thought it was very interesting to learn about that. And I also really liked the, how we were learning about electrons and photons, and I feel like I'm always going to remember about those.
Talking about this project for another nine weeks, but we're going to let the board keep going. Any final questions or thoughts from the board?
I just want to say thank you all very, very much for coming in. I'm excited to see you next year because you're going to keep going with this project and working together and come back in in 5th grade. Yeah? And thank you, Ms. Curtin, and Ms. Randall, and Mr. Hall also. Excellent. This has been amazing. Really appreciate it. And Ms. Irvin, sorry. Just wait a minute here. Okay. I am going to now, the next step is, is anyone here for public comment? Okay. I see no one here for public comment. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November 6th? Gianna, thank you. And a second? Kelly, thank you. Are there any corrections for the regular meeting minutes of November 6th? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Six in favor. Student rep in favor. And now the motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from November 6th. Just a motion. Gianna, thank you. And a second, Kelly. Good. Any corrections for those? All in favor of approving the minutes? Six in favor. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to announcements from the district.
Good evening. Rebecca Noway from Oyster River High School. A couple of celebratory announcements this evening. So the field hockey team was awarded the Eastern Propane NHIAA Community Spirit Award for their volunteerism in the Bobcat Youth Field Hockey Program. The Field Hockey Boosters ran this program as a fundraiser. They had 35 participants from kindergarten to 6th grade, and it was over six Sunday mornings with one-hour sessions. And the players participated in the Pink Jamboree, which was a fundraiser for breast cancer, hosted by the Seacoast Field Hockey in Napping at the end of October. The players coached all of the sessions, spent time creating practice plans, and coordinated the efforts at the Pink Jamboree, which was an eight-hour day. We want to commend all of the following students who were volunteer coaches for this program: Natalie Buck and Grace Harvey, F. S. Sullivan and Emma Smith, Maggie Aldos and Nora Rogers, Sadie McLeod, Gray Bowden, Rowan Pickering, Olivia Anderson, and Mia Weglars. So I just wanted to make sure they had the acknowledgement for all of their hard work. Our hobby, Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Student this year is Morgan Rahini, and she'll be attending the Leadership Seminar in 2025. And these student ambassadors participate in numerous and varied activities, so it helps unlock their understanding of their leadership and what they value in leadership. And so I'm hoping we'll be able to hear about Morgan's experiences when she's finished with that seminar. We had 28 students who took the ASVAB on November 15th. And on that same day, we had Lieutenant Colonel Scott Potique come to the school, so that was extremely successful. We had a lot of fun. He had about 300-odd students in the theater for his presentation. And then he had lunch with some students in the cafeteria. He actually wanted to have the cafeteria experience, and his wife Kristin came with him all day. Then we had a flex session with about 50 students, and then he went to visit the astronomy class. Then we had a flex session with about 50 students. And then he went to visit the astronomy class. And so he had a very full day with a lot of talking, but a lot of education and fun went on. And then we also have, the last thing for me, a cell phone survey coming out. So I sent that out to staff. The MTSS Universal Committee created that. They created one for students, one for staff, and one for parents. And so we want to make sure we're getting information from all stakeholder groups on their perceptions. How has this gone so far in the first quarter? So the staff received their survey. I'll be sending parent survey out in the newsletter this Friday. And then students will probably send out Thursday or Friday. I email them every few weeks. So I'm gonna put it in there. And everyone will have about a week and a half. And I'll probably send it out twice just to make sure people have an opportunity. And then that MTSS committee is going to look over the results and see what we, if we need any tweaks, how is it going? What are the pros, what are the cons, and what we need to do with that data? Any questions for me?
Yes.
So no questions, but just to kind of bolster or recognize the field hockey team. They, this was the first time that they had done the, you know, the coaching of the littles. And my daughter participated. And I've never seen her listen as closely and pay attention because the high schoolers were her people. Like, that was exactly what, what she needed. And they did an amazing job coaching the kids and were so fun. You know, early Sunday morning, you'd think they'd rather, you know, not be with a bunch of littles running around the fields. But they were there, you know, every, every week. And the jamboree was excellent. They, they coached it. They, they did everything from start to finish. It was excellent.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
They're definitely to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just wanna, I'm gonna reserve my time to the discussion with Novo Studio. But I just wanted to echo a thanks to Scott Potteek. I had the opportunity to join Scott's presentation to the middle school. And it really was remarkable in terms of hearing his story as a graduate of the school system, beginning with pointing out his experience at Mastway and that his family connection with his mom, serving as a teacher at Moheramit. But it was really a story about finding your passion. And I think he really had an important message to middle school students about his academic work as a student, the struggles and challenges he faced, and how he parlayed that into his passion for outdoor education as an undergrad, but really had the opportunity to fly in a plane. And he admitted he was, he had motion sickness as a child. So his first flight in a refueling jet was bumpy, to say the least. But then he went on to serve for 20 years flying fighter jets and led to where he is today. But I think more so is taking the students through the work of SpaceX and how transformative, from everything, from spacesuits to just their mission is the first, we didn't realize until he said, that was the farthest that we've traveled into space since the Apollo program. So it really put a context in terms of what he accomplished. He's coming back to meet with Moheramit and Mastway students in the spring. So it really is a big commitment and it was a great day for students. So I certainly thank him for his time and his energy and his beautiful pictures of space and the earth. It was just phenomenal.
Thank you very much. Any other district announcements? Okay. How about board announcements? No board announcements. All right. Assistant Superintendent, do you have anything? Okay. Thank you for the excellent presentation. And thank you, Mr. Goldsmith. That was great. Superintendent, you're gonna reserve. Business administrator? Nothing this evening. Student representative?
All right. Just a few announcements tonight. Looking back, Cross Country just had the New England's and they did well, placing fourth overall. Coffee House also did take place and it happened on the 7th to celebrate their quarter one segment being published. But looking forward, the Fall Play is also taking place this week. The Drama Department is putting on the 39 Steps and will be showing at 7:00 PM this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, with another 2 o'clock showing on Saturday as well. And tickets are $7 for adults and $5 for students. Coating and Coco will also be held at all schools on December 4th. And winter sports are coming up as well. No concrete announcements yet, but over the next few weeks, tryouts will be, be held and the season should be getting started. By our next meeting, games should begin to be underway. And finally, in terms of music, the orchestra will be holding their first concert of the year on the 12th, with chorus holding theirs on the 16th, and the band, jazz band and guitars concert being on the 17th. All are at 6:00 PM and are held right here at the middle school. But that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations to the Cross Country team. That was the girls' Cross Country team. And the boys had one runner, Mitchell?
Yes, Mitchell Keese.
All right. Excellent. That's excellent. Finance committee report? Okay, we have no unanimous consent. And so we'll move into the discussion. And go ahead, Dr. Morris.
Dr. Shapps. It's okay.
So wing and a miss. Yeah, yeah. Dr. Shapps.
Thank you. So it's a pleasure to introduce, and I know we, we have to take a minute to set up the presentation, but I should say welcome back, Anne Ketterer and Steve Lepoot, the Principals of Novo Studio Architects. They are not strangers to the district as they really led the middle school, school design and construction projects. So they're very familiar and we didn't have to give them directions, how to get here this evening. So I've had the pleasure since really July to collaborate with Anne and Steve, with Dave Totti, Director of Facilities, who really was the point person in, in many ways of fulfilling the board's, what I would say directive or request to fully investigate three projects. And tonight, they are here really to present their work. I want to say that how impressed I am, and I think our full team, with the work of Anne and Steve and their team. We gave them really an ambitious timeline to complete three very detailed projects. And in the midst of our, the initial work, I think we all paused to reflect on what appeared to be, at least in the Mastway project and, and the Moheramit expansion projects, that the idea of just adding space really evolved into a more broader consideration of programmatic intentions, our goals for program, space utilization, and enrollment projections. And so we, they will describe, I would say, the architectural pivot, but really more so really taking time to deliver what I think is a more comprehensive answer in all of the three, what I would say asks of the board. And I think we want to say to the public watching and to those here tonight, that this is really the start of a conversation that I think will allow the board to ask questions, to, I would say, many ways, provide Anne and Steve more time and their team to give more specific detail to cost estimates and so on and so forth. So we want to make sure that we give them as much time to share their information, but also equal time to the board to kind of post questions or ask about next steps as well. So with that, first of all, I want to say thanks to Dave for really kind of being our point person to make sure in communication with school leaders and staff that everybody could be together to really participate and contribute to this process. So with that, welcome back and thank you.
Thank you. I know I see at least one familiar face. It's really such a pleasure for both Steve and I to be standing in this building, particularly in this, in this room. So as Dr. Shapps noted, we, when we worked at La Valley Brenzinger together, I was your project architect and Steve was, excuse me, I was the project manager and Steve was the project architect. And in that time, we realized that professionally we complement one another. Steve is a very detail oriented guy, loves to get into the weeds of coordination and construction. And I am someone that loves to learn about people and dream in design with them. So together, he, he left La Valley Brenzinger in 2022. I left in 2023 and I started a company, Novo Studio. And I called him and I said, well, what else are you doing? You're gonna join me and we'll be better together. And so we're thrilled to be here to talk with you about your schools. So we did a deep dive, as Dr. Shapps noted. And we're really here to talk, one, about the existing conditions analysis, looking specifically at your high school and your two elementary schools. And then we're gonna jump into the education space analysis and programming. And lastly, really look at some conceptual designs for Moheramit. So we're gonna start with existing conditions. And for that, I'm gonna step aside and let Steve talk about it.
Thank you. And thank you for inviting us to be here tonight. As Anne said, it's a little bittersweet being back in this building and especially this space. So Dr. Shapps alluded to a little bit of why we got involved in this project. And I just wanted to expand on that a little bit. So during the summer, we started looking at a need for additional classroom space at Moheramit. And as we started looking at that, we, there were some, a number of questions that we asked and that we all talked about, the team, that we didn't really immediately have answers to. You know, first and foremost, how many classrooms? Second, where should they go in the building so that they integrate well with the learning environment of the building? And also, can the existing building, the systems in that building, support some sort of an addition? And these were not, and, and also finally, are there additional spaces, support spaces needed to support additional classrooms in that building? And it wasn't immediately apparent that we had answers to those questions. And so it did make sense to take a step back and look at the building itself, the physical nature of the building, as well as the existing conditions of the space program. And while we were doing that, we were also having discussions about a potential expansion at Mastway with the cafeteria, possibly another space at that building. And so, you know, in, in the spirit of equity and looking at how K through four education is delivered in the district, it made sense to look at both of these buildings at the same time in the same manner. While looking at the physical structures of the buildings, we decided to include the high school in that study as well. You know, obviously this building is pretty brand new and, you know, from our opinion, you know, perfect. So didn't really need to look at this one too, too closely yet. But we, we included the high school and at least with the physical assessment, so that as we look at deficiencies in those buildings and started putting together recommendations, we could give you a global picture of the facilities in, in your school district. So kind of taking that, we started defining our scope this summer as looking at the physical assessment of these buildings to, again, identify the deficiencies in them. And then secondly, looking at an audit of the space program, particularly in the two elementary schools, look, finding the deficiencies there in a similar manner so that we could make recommendations for program needs. And so the outcomes of, of that scope really was a physical assessment, documentation of the deficiencies in the physical plants of these bills, of these buildings, excuse me, to develop a 10-year capital spending plan that would essentially be a framework and a guide for you over the course of a decade on putting, implementing upgrades and improvements to these buildings. And then the second outcome we were looking at was to put together an audit of your space program, educational space program of the elementary schools, so that, again, we could not only identify the deficiencies there, but look at what your space needs are, so that we could use that, again, to validate additional space that you need, to validate perhaps reconfiguring existing space, and then use that as a guide for developing an approach to the reconfiguration of the buildings, especially Moheramit, and recommend what additional space would be needed. So that was a big spiel about kind of setting the table for, for this study, but just wanted to go into that in a little bit more detail, so you kind of understood where we're coming from.
Just to interject, there was one other component that will not get as much attention here, but we did have the opportunity to bring people together for an ed visioning session that you alluded to, really about thinking about possible reconfiguration options in the future. So it was aligned with, I would say, these purposes because it really focused in on program opportunities, you know, visioning of the future, and then this issue of adequate space. So I just want to add that to the mix. And I appreciated their participation in that process as well.
So I'm gonna talk about the physical assessment of, of the school buildings. And then we'll transition to Anne, who's gonna take over with the space program part of our presentation. So the physical assessment, we, we did that in a number of different ways. Just queue up the high school here. So we went on tours of the buildings, myself as the architect. And then we brought in a team of consultants. So we had a structural engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, plumbing and fire protection engineer. We walked through the buildings, went through pretty much every room that we could, went up on the roof, poked into all the corners. We gathered all of the existing conditions drawings that Mr. Totti has in his office, studied those, went through all of those. And then we also met with the principals extensively with Mr. Totti. We met with your school resource officer as well and just gathered as much information as we could about the existing conditions of these buildings so that we could learn, you know, what, what is there, what the deficiencies are, what works well, and, and all of that. So I'm gonna start, and then as we gathered that information, we started documenting it. And in the report, the draft report that you received, towards the end of it are a number of spreadsheets that document all those deficiencies. And so we used a matrix of prioritizing which, because all those deficiencies end up turning into recommendations for improvements and upgrades and repairs to these buildings. And so we used a matrix to start prioritizing those into things that need to be addressed immediately. And these were primarily safety and health concerns. Then we had items that we categorized into short term. So, and those we are recommending be remedied in the next year. After that comes short term recommendations. These are things that we felt, in our opinion, should be dealt with or addressed within the next two to five years. And then finally, excuse me, deficiencies or things that need to be addressed in the long term range. So those are six to 10 years out. And so that's how we started identifying these things and then organizing them for you. And then ultimately started putting budget numbers to them as well. And we can talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. So I just want to go through the three buildings and talk about some of our findings here. And I'm gonna add a little bit more detail than what's up on, on the slide. Starting with the high school. So just generally, all three of these buildings, the high school and two elementary schools, I have to say, and I, and I've walked through a lot of school buildings. I've done several of these sorts of studies. So I've been in many, many school buildings. But I'd like to say that all of your buildings are well maintained. And, you know, for the most part, are in good condition. But due to their age, there are things, you know, systems and finishes have a lifespan. And they have different lifespans. Some pieces of equipment have a 20-year lifespan. Some materials have 15 years, other things, five to 10 years. And so as we go through these and look at things that need to be fixed or replaced, I just want to say it's not, you know, it's not a judgment on the care of the buildings. It's just we're looking at the natural life of these systems and materials. So with the high school, some of the immediate things that we saw that should be taken care of are up on the roof. So there are some wood supports that support rooftop equipment that, you know, are, are beginning to disintegrate. Those should be replaced. And there's some piping insulation on piping on those rooftop units that we recommend be replaced as well. So the immediate concerns of the high school, I think were pretty minor. Moving on to short term, we start getting into the list that you see up here. The turf field and the track are getting to the point where the track surface needs to be replaced and the turf field is beginning to near the, the end of its service life. So, you know, that's, needs to be replaced. In terms of the asphalt paving, two of the parking lots across the street have been recently redone, but the main parking lot running in front of the building, that's gonna be due for somewhere coming up soon. The outside of the building, we saw some minor masonry, brick repairs and concrete block repairs that should be dealt with. As with all the, as with all the buildings, all the caulk joints, exterior sealants on the outside of the building are gonna be due to be replaced. We saw areas that the vinyl tile flooring is beginning to really end, get to the end of its service life, especially the entry corridor is in pretty rough shape at the high school. So we're recommending that be redone. A number of the carpeting in the building is getting pretty worn. The library, the auditorium. auditorium, the music room definitely needs to be addressed. And then we're starting to look at rooftop equipment that services the mechanical system of the building. All of those units are nearing the end of their useful life, and we're recommending a program to start replacing those as well. Terms of -- so those are some of the short-term items. Longer-term items, again, going through the building and replacing the vinyl flooring. The ceiling tiles are really starting to sag throughout the building, so there's a, you know, look at a program to probably in phases replace the ceilings. You know, we talked some -- we had some discussions about designing a program to install air conditioning throughout the building. And finally, we're recommending an upgrade to the PA system, to a digital system, as well as some upgrades to security camera systems as well. So long-winded kind of findings for the high school. Moving on to Mastway. So again, of these three buildings, Mastway has -- a portion of the Mastway building is the oldest building currently in the system. But, you know, we found it is very well-maintained, very clean, but, you know, due to its age, things are going to be, you know, things will need to be replaced over the next five to 10 years. So in terms of the immediate concerns, again, that should, we recommend be addressed in the next year. Again, fairly minor. There are some areas that require emergency lighting in the building for egress purposes, mainly in the gym, and there's one vestibule, exit vestibule that was missing some emergency lighting. In terms of short-term recommendations, again, in the two-to-five-year range, the parking lot's in pretty rough shape. So we're recommending a redesign and redo of the parking lot. The building, the outside of the building is a mixture of brick veneer, some newer, what we call composite panels on the additions. And then the older part of the building has this painted, it's, we call it IFIS, which is an exterior insulated finish system. It's on the building, it's sort of like a beige-orange color. That finish on the exterior of the building is very thin, it's very brittle. We saw many, many locations around the building where it's been damaged. You can probably pretty easily damage it just by pressing your thumb into it. And so we're recommending a replacement of that as well, because when that gets damaged, it lets water into the building, and then you get a whole host of other problems. Also on the outside of the building, there's fairly extensive areas needing brick repairs. There's cracking. The mortar joints are, in some areas, need to be what we call repointed, so replacement of the mortar. And again, caulking, sealants on the outside of the building should also be replaced. Again, all those sorts of things help keep water out of the building, and so it's very, very important for the longevity of the building, as well as the interior environment of the building, to address items like that. Couple other things for short-term. The in-classroom toilets in the first-grade classrooms are in pretty rough shape. The ventilation system, and they're not anywhere close to being ADA compliant as well, so we're recommending taking a look at those. And then on the electrical front for short-term, there's some fire alarm devices that we recommend either be restored or replaced, and some carbon dioxide sensors as well. Long-term recommendations, like the high school, the vinyl tile flooring is starting to be pretty rough, so we're recommending looking at replacing that, as are the acoustic ceiling tile ceilings. The mechanical systems, certain aspects of the mechanical systems will need to be replaced over the long term. And again, we're recommending an upgrade of the PA system to a digital system, as well as looking at the security camera system as well. And then finally, existing conditions at MoHaramit. Again, even though this is a somewhat more recent building, it's getting to the point where, again, I'm kind of repeating myself, but again, you know, some systems and finishes are ending the year, ending, coming towards the end of their expected service life and should be replaced as well. So immediate concerns at MoHaramit. You know, our mechanical engineer flagged some ventilation issues in the boiler room having to do with the heating, hot water, the heating system, hot water heater. There's a laundry dryer in there that also needs to be properly vented, and there are several locations in the building missing emergency lighting, so we're recommending those be addressed in the next year. Short-term, like Mastway, that parking lot is also in pretty rough shape. MoHaramit has a number of drainage issues around the outside of the building, the stretch along, the side of the building along the playground. There's also frequent ponding at the main entrance of the building, so we're recommending that there be some regrading and drainage work done to avoid ponding, especially at entrances of the building, which are important. Like the other buildings, there are some brick repairs on the outside of the building, and again, caulking that we're recommending be done. The roof on, the roof on the whole at MoHaramit is in pretty good condition, at least the membrane roofs. There's an extensive area of metal roof that, again, will need some repair work, and then mechanical equipment replacement as well, like at the other buildings. Long-term, similar story, vinyl tile flooring, acoustic ceiling tiles, and again, the PA system upgrade to that, as well as the security system. So those are all the sort of physical assessments of the building, and I'll just want to do a little bit of introduction to the space programming. We use the same methodology with looking at space usage and the educational space program in these buildings, as we did with the physical assessment. So we created accurate floor plans of the building, and then went through and cataloged all the spaces, or, you know, again, the other term that we used was making an audit of all the educational and support spaces in the building as a baseline in terms of space program, looking at, you know, every single room, how is it being used, what's the size of the room, and then organizing those into categories, and then using that as a tool to look at the space needs, which I'm going to hand over to you.
Thanks, Steve. So really, you can think of the work that we did last summer and this fall as a health and wellness check on your buildings. Now, the space summary did not include the high school. Our main focus with putting these into the categories of the existing, the dysfunctional, and the missing, it really was primarily focused on the elementary, and we also took some time to do the pre-K. The impetus of this kind of work is, you know, if you, if you want to understand where you're going, you first have to understand where you are. And it was identified in the summer that MoHaramit is missing some spaces. And so before we launch into the design of additional square footage for that building, we thought it prudent to take a step back and to get the whole view of, the whole picture of each building. So on the left here is just, this is what the spreadsheets in your packet, this is what they are. They're showing in blue, this is a catalog of your existing space. It was taken from the floor plans that Steve created while he was doing the very detailed existing conditions analysis. We then met with staff members at each school, so it was a separate meeting for MoHaramit, Mastway, and the pre-K. And during that time, we reviewed the floor plan, we had this existing spreadsheet of spaces, and we talked about them. And it's through this programming meeting, as well as walking, walking the entire building, looking and seeing how education is performed, to understand how it's being, the spaces are being utilized. And during that meeting, we were able to identify spaces that were, what I'm calling, for lack of a better term, dysfunctional. And then we went back, we created that catalog, and identified an additional category of spaces that are missing. From there, we came back to that same group and had an additional meeting to review our findings. So that was the process by which we got to the analysis of each school. I'm going to start with the pre-K, I'm going to go out of order, because I'm going to end with MoHaramit. And the reason I'm ending with MoHaramit is because the last part of our presentation tonight is actually looking at the proposed conceptual expansion to MoHaramit. So starting with the pre-K, what we found is that generally speaking, pre-K likes being in the high school. The teacher or the director of the pre-K program, she also teaches a class of early childhood education at the high school. So as you can imagine, having the pre-K classrooms right there in the high school makes the function of observing and participating and volunteering with the little ones pretty convenient, pretty easy. There is no current issue with circulation. You sort of wonder, high schools, a lot of students, you know, we had to ask the question, how does pick-up and drop-off work? Is it safe? Do people get in each other's way? Given the nature of the timing difference, they don't get in one another's way. So from the standpoint of circulation and program overlap, it functions very well. There are going to be some sort of funky issues with space when you take a three-year-old and an 18-year-old, and you have them, just one wall separating them. So we have some acoustical considerations and concerns. Nothing major, but as you can imagine, when the preschool students are in the playground and the adjacent high school class is, I don't know, in the middle of an exam, there's distraction. So that occurs. And then similarly, if the little ones are trying to learn, or gee, maybe they're napping, and an announcement comes over the intercom, you know, there's disturbance there. So these are minor concerns, but they're worth pointing out. Spatially, some other dysfunctions would include the toilet rooms. The toilet rooms are currently off of one, but not both of the pre-K classrooms, meaning one class needs to walk through the other class to access them. And if you've ever been inside the pre-K toilet rooms, you would note that they're also doubling as a storage closet for the program. So from there, we kind of move into missing spaces, and we can identify that there is a toilet room off of one classroom missing, and there is general program storage needs missing. Also missing is a dedicated OT classroom that would double as a speech pathologist area. Currently, another one of the dysfunctions is the pre-K students that need OT, they have their own specific OT teacher, but they share the OT room with the high school, but by law, they cannot be there simultaneously. So there is a scheduling and timing conflict that on occasion takes place. So in a perfect scenario, we would have, they would have their own dedicated OT space that could be shared with the space for the speech pathologist, because right now, she does not have one. The last bit about the pre-K is currently, the only door to get out of the pre-K classrooms is to go through the stairwell of the high school. Steve and I are not here to tell you that your school's unsafe, that's not what I'm saying. Every jurisdiction is different, but it would be our recommendation that at some point you consider increasing the safety and putting a door directly from each classroom to the outside. And the reason I say that is the code is very aware of the size of human beings. And so when you have a three-year-old and an 18-year-old, in an event of an emergency, and everyone's trying to get out of the building, there's, there's a fear of, you know, I don't want to say trampling, there's a fear of the cluster of those two converging. So I think that one of the things that the district may want to think about is just adding a couple of exterior doors, which certainly would make it easier to access the playground as well. So moving on to Mastway. And as Steve noted, initially, our work at the Mastway was going to be to increase the cafeteria. However, the district recently purchased some new furniture, and it's amazing what the correct furniture can do to a space. So the circulation issues that really occurred because you had round tables, once they were replaced with rectangular tables, actually took care of it. We were midway through considering design options for an expansion when we decided to pause that project and to do this health and wellness check. I don't want to say that your cafeteria is perfect, because it is not, and there's a reason I'm leading with the space analysis, leading with the cafeteria. Currently, with the quantity of students, and, you know, say you have, so every grade has a dedicated lunch period, and there are four classrooms in some cases per grade, when you add up all the students and all of the paraprofessionals and the teachers and the lunch person, maybe the janitor, right now, we calculated, I think it was about 88 people at one time for that 20 to 30, depending on the grade minute lunch. Your cafeteria, when you do a code analysis, meaning what's, what's the code maximum allowable people in a space, that's about 94. So you're, you're at 88 to 90, and your maximum's 94. So you can see that if your school grows, you're really up against that, that barrier with the code. And so I think that this notion that the board had of expanding the cafeteria was very well-founded. Just because the tables are working better now does not mean the problem unto itself has been resolved. More to say about the Mastway is you do have 20 classrooms. However, only 19 are being used for general education. There is one that's being used for your math and science specialist. Next year, they are expected to increase enrollment, so that math and science specialist will be homeless. That, that will go back to a general education classroom. And so it's going to be a little bit of a struggle for the principal to find an appropriate space for that very, very much-needed program. Lastly, the OTPT. When we talk about missing spaces or dysfunctional spaces, I think we have to talk about OTPT. It is currently located on the stage. And when I first approached the meeting, I expected to get an earful about how terrible this was, but in fact, it was the opposite. The location of the stage does two pretty critical things for the OTPT program. Number one, it's a big space. It's bigger than what the high school has, now having been in both, and far bigger than what MoHaramit has. So it's a nice generous space, and there's a lot of equipment with those programs, so that's nothing but a positive. Another positive is that it's across the hall from the ERR, and I forgot what that acronym means. Steve, do you remember what ERR stands for?
Extended Resource Room.
Extended Resource Room. Thank you. There's a lot, there's a lot of student resource acronyms, and I cannot keep them all straight. So, but the ERR and the OTPT have a lot of crossover with the same students throughout the course of the day. So actually, having the OTPT on this stage is very convenient for the ERR. However, it's also, what is it, three feet? It's a stage, so it's not at the finished floor of the rest of the building. And so the good news is, the school does not use it as a stage, so it's not, you're not missing out by using the stage as a classroom. But the bad news is, is it's really not handicap accessible in its current capacity. You do have a lift, but I really see that as a temporary measure. We would recommend that in future, you would bring, if you want to keep the OTPT in that space, you would at the very least remove those risers and bring it down to the level of the first floor. So additional missing spaces, well, we talked about the math and science room. We talked about extra square footage at the cafeteria. We, they would love an additional Zen Den, which is a cooldown room for students with sort of some emotional and behavioral needs, and a shared office space for staff members, as well as an additional sort of small conference room. Some students need testing outside of the general education environment, and they need a special room to do it. Right now, they can kind of do it in the maker space, they can kind of do it in one of the, one of the conference rooms, but the problem is, when that happens, then you don't have a conference room. So it would be great if there was a small breakout room, some sort of flexible, small conference room that could be allocated to that use when the need arises. And then lastly, storage, because there's always need for more storage. So that is the Mastway. So we're ending on MoHaramit. I love MoHaramit. I think it's a great school. When you, as an architect, when you look at the floor plans of this building, you think to yourself, this is nuts. Who would design this? And then you go there, and you're in the Commons, the East and West Commons, and it's got all this light from the Clara stories, and it's got flags, and there's student artwork, and you realize you love it, and it's a very special place. So the overview of MoHaramit is that it's a very welcoming, wonderful school, friendly environment, but ultimately, this school is working hard every day, doing double duty with many of its classrooms serving multiple purposes. So with that, we'll just jump right into the issues and dysfunctions. The dysfunctional space in MoHaramit is it's missing square footage that is otherwise dedicated and allocated to student services. To give you some examples, the OTPT room and the ESOL room are the same room. They just do it together. It's kind of amazing. And it's fine, I mean, they work, and everyone's happy, but it's, I think that we can probably do better. At one point, a storage room was turned into a small office for the assistant student, student services professional, and in order for her to access her office, she has to walk through MoHaramit's Zen Den. Now, this is the room where students with behavioral and emotional circumstances go to calm down. So to use it also as a path of circulation is less than ideal. On top of that, the case On top of that, the case manager's room is too small. The learning center is currently located in a classroom. The classroom, it's too small. There is one conference room at the MoHerramitt Elementary School, but there's no tutor rooms. So the conference room is now the tutor room. So when you go and you want to have a meeting at MoHerramitt, maybe you can use the maker space, or maybe you just kind of hang out in the hallway and have a conference. It's not ideal. There is no professional space for these meetings to take place. And to state the obvious, there is no art classroom. I will say, though, that the art teacher has done a wonderful job with the temporary walls, and probably because it's in the East Commons with all the natural light coming from the Clara story above. It feels nice and inviting, but it is not a dedicated room. And because the, what was the class, the art classroom is now a general education classroom, the art teacher, and therefore the students, do not have access to the kiln, because the kiln room is off of that classroom. And were they to fire up the kiln, I think that there would be a heat circumstance. That would be less than ideal, and you'd have people coming and going for the general education classroom happening in that particular room. So our list of missing spaces for MoHerramitt with the tutor, and the art room, and proper conferences, and dedicated ESOL office, et cetera, amounts to a net square footage of almost 7,000 square feet. I think that, it's in your report, but I think that the Mastway was about maybe 1,500 or 1,600. If you were to extrapolate and take the student population of MoHerramitt versus its current square footage, you would get to about 150-ish square feet per student. If you did that at the Mastway, it'd be 178. So when the board gave the directive to Dr. Shapps and Mr. Totti to start thinking about an addition, it was very well-founded, because the school truly is missing space. Now we can look at pretty pictures. Enough of the words. Initially, when we began this design exercise, there was what we thought, a nice idea of putting an addition, a classroom addition, up by the gym, connecting it to the existing education core area, and creating sort of a really nice courtyard. A protected courtyard, I mean Mastway has one. It can be a really nice environment for learning, for recess, very safe place for kids to experience nature as part of the education of their day. And we looked at this, and we identified a few issues with it. Most notably, that there is a grade change at that area of the building versus the general education area of the building. So we'd have to navigate that with some sort of a ramp. And also, that by locating, the biggest one, I think, was locating the educational, the general educational classrooms in that area of the site, really removes them from the existing general education classrooms. And one thing that every educator wants to achieve is this notion of grade-level alignment. So from there, we decided to do a second option and look at putting the addition on the east end and growing the school linearly. And what that did is it created more of a core learning center. It also meant that we had to look at retooling some of the inner spaces of the building. So what we found is, we could maintain an academic ring around the outside, get our 20 classrooms for general education, put the art room back where it was next to its kiln, recreate the East Commons, because we love that space, and we wouldn't want the students to be without it. And also, what you see here in pink, in the magenta, is we can start to create all of the missing student resource spaces. They can be in the core, in the center of the building, but they're also dispersed, so they're easily accessed by anyone from kindergarten to fourth grade, and they're not clustered together so much so that there sort of becomes a special education stigma. That's not something that we would ever want to design into this addition. So when you take a step back and you look at sort of the nitty-gritty of the floor plan, the areas on the screen that are orange, those are those student resource spaces. Blue is the general education, and the rest is either storage or circulation. What this plan does is it tries to take the existing architecture, in a way mimic it, really mostly by creating these interior commons that are so loved by the students and teachers, and so well-used in many different ways. I think it was the principal that said, just give me a room. I can come up with, you know, 20 different things I can do with it. So I think one of the things that this floor plan really tries to do is maintain flexibility with growth. And then lastly, when it comes to growth, something that is already factored into the cost estimate that's a part of the report that you've already received is this notion of future expansion. So this addition can be designed so that the steel is sized appropriately to support a second story, and this floor plan is laid out so that, as you see in the darker shade of blue, we could very easily add on stairwell and an elevator for vertical circulation. Looking at the site, it's fair to ask how this extension would affect the site. As you can see, we don't have civil drawings, no survey, no updated survey was completed as part of our work, but just overlaying it on the Google Maps, you can see that there is an area that's possibly affected, so some grading would have to change, but this is not an insurmountable task. And lastly, knowing this district as I do, the new roof would have the potential for solar panels and green design. The existing roof is aged. It's also sloped, does lots of funny things. So our structural engineers told us that we should not assume, under any circumstances, that we can put solar panels on that roof, but certainly on the new one, it would be not a problem at all. And then I will end with a pretty picture. We like the idea of using brick. That is really part of the aesthetic vernacular of the MoHerramitt. I would not recommend taking the existing design and merely repeating it, only because building systems and materials have changed so dramatically over the past 40 years, 35, but certainly, we could design it in a way that would be a nice nod to the old building. And now, Steve and I are happy to take any questions.
No, no, I don't. I was gonna, while we're thinking of questions, I just want to say thank you very much. This is extremely detailed, extremely thorough, easy to read, which I appreciate. And thank you very much for all your hard work, and I appreciate everyone that you worked with also.
I just want to add, the version of the report that you recently received is a draft version. There's still some pieces in terms of pricing that we're still working on, need to be filled in. I just want to mention that we have Jesse Phant here from Bowen Corporation. They're the construction manager that built this building, and they're assisting us with this study and putting together the budget numbers for our recommendations in the capital spending plan. So it's still a bit of a work in process. We're expecting to have that wrapped up in about a week and be issuing you the final version of the report.
So I just start off getting back to the facility assessment survey and the way you presented it in terms of immediate, short-term, long-term, in terms of listing the totality of projects. The question I have is that, because the total number is obviously significant relative to 10 years of capital work across the three buildings, is it hard to at least calculate in some ways that as some of this gets pushed out, in terms of the delay, with the cost differential in terms of materials and so on, what that would do to the price estimates in current day? So I mean, I think from my experience in looking at a capital plan, that the idea of prioritizing health and safety and dealing with immediate becomes the priority. Then you look at the short term, but there's always this kind of fine line about what a bond would contain and what you need, the hard decisions you need to postpone. So my first question is, as you look at that span of 10 years and you look at the cost estimates, how do you calculate, anticipate what that delay impact would be?
Sure. So in the pricing that we've provided in the capital spending plan, we worked with Jesse to identify what I describe as labor and material costs. So I'm going to take vinyl tile flooring, for instance. And so Jesse and his company helped us to identify the cost of, you know, replacing 10,000 square foot of vinyl tile. So that's just that $10,000, and I'm just creating a number. That's today's number for materials and labor. In the report, when you go to the chapter on the capital spending plan, we have been, we've tried to be very transparent about how we've kind of dealt with these numbers. And so we take that initial labor and material cost, and we start adding some additional percentages on top of that to kind of turn it into a real project. So, you know, in terms of, you know, construction, things that we call general conditions, insurance, various design contingencies and stuff, these are all things that we would normally add to construction costs in a design project. So that kind of translates that immediate material and labor cost into what you would probably get if you put it out to bid to a contractor in today's dollars. Secondly, we added on another escalation percentage, and so, and that's also, it's detailed in the report. So for items that we're recommending be done in the next year, we've identified an escalation of 4.5%. So we take that $10,000 cost, that first bunch of things that I just described that you add on to it, all those add up to about 47.5%. So you increase that $10,000 by 47.5%. And then if it's going to be done this year, we increase that by another 4.5% for this year. Looking out for a project that we're defining as the short term, so over a 10-year period, we're looking at two to five years out, we're increasing that by, it was 22.5, so it's an additional 22.5% we're applying to that original $10,000. If it's a project that we've identified to be in the long term, so that's six to 10 years out, we're increasing that by 45%. So any of the items in this report, if you want to kind of change that category of immediate, short-term, or long-term, you also need to kind of change that escalation percentage, either 4.5%, 22.5%, or 45%. And that's how you can sort of rejigger the priorities in the timeline of these if you choose to do so. Did that, okay.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, all of this is, there's a little bit of looking into a crystal ball for this. Under normal circumstances, it's very hard to predict how construction is going to go. We just had an election, and so, you know, we're looking to see possible changes in the economy, which then kind of trickles down to the construction market as well. So these are our best educated guess of how these, you know, costs looking into the future as well. And, you know, when we looked at these numbers and putting these percentages on, you know, we worked with Bowen Corporation to make sure that we were all kind of in agreement on, for what we know right now, these are the appropriate numbers to be applying to these costs. But, you know, just, you know, the big caveat is, it's really kind of hard to tell how things are going to shake out, especially in the short term.
In that vein, you noted that we would need to pre-purchase some of the long-lead items. What are the categories of items you're seeing for long-lead times?
I'm sorry, what, what things you'd like to pre-purchase?
So you noted, and this is, a lot of projects, like ductile iron is really, ductile iron pipe is really hard to get. You're talking two to three lead times. So we've got projects in bid that were, you know, companies are already buying the pipes, so they're there when the constructions start. Similarly, you noted in the report that long-lead items might need to be pre-purchased in order to hold schedule, and so I was curious, within this context, what variety of long-lead items, you know, like I know, like big electronics, switchgear are long-lead items, but that's not applicable to this setting. So I was curious, like, are we talking, the HVAC systems are all two to three years out? Like, what kind of things constitute a long-lead item in this setting?
Sure. I think a lot of our findings, you know, fortunately, from what we could tell, things like switch gears and transformers don't really apply, and we weren't seeing any deficiencies with those sorts of things. And those, as designers, we're finding are kind of really alarming to us about the lead times on those. So fortunately, those don't apply to what we're finding here. But I think, you know, one thing that you mentioned, major mechanical pieces of equipment, rooftop equipment, those can take some period of time to get. And so, you know, if you're looking at doing a project, you know, if you want to start replacing some of those pieces of equipment in any of the schools in the next, you know, year or two, you do need to kind of consider the overall timeline of when you would like to have that completed, back that out to, you know, having an engineer to design it so that you can put it out to bid and order it in a timely manner to kind of meet those deadlines. So, yeah, I think sort of major pieces of equipment would fall into that category. I think, you know, now that we're at least a couple of years out of the COVID pandemic, aside from switch gears and transformers, a lot of things that we're having difficulty with lead times on have resolved themselves. So the impact of potential tariffs, though, you know, all bets are off. But that isn't something that I would be too terribly concerned about moving forward, as long as you're aligning sort of when you have money available to when you're having, you know, bringing a designer onboard and a contractor onboard to get those things ordered at the time that you want to have the project completed.
To build on Steve Heather's comment, when we think about the MoHerramitt project, we've had preliminary discussions about how that construction phase would roll out. Do you, could we talk through that in terms of, because it's an addition, there's some site work to be done without interrupting the educational process, and so just getting a sense of how that might be considered.
Just real quick before you start, can you flip back to the floor plan version?
A project of this nature is special in that the existing building would need to remain occupied, so you would have a phased occupied construction. And so great consideration would be taken to, what is the work that we can get done during the summer when the building is empty? And then what can we do during the typical, the regular school year that would be the least disruptive? As an architect, and I'm not a builder, I can't answer that. I don't know, but I can tell you what the process would be. We would, once a construction manager is selected, we would sit down with that team and with the team from the school, the building committee, and certainly administrators of MoHerramitt, to understand, well, what's important to you, what are the schedule conflicts, you know, what can we do during the breaks, et cetera? And so what it is, is it's the collective bringing together all the minds and making a logistics plan that is about efficiency and safety, because you have construction teams in actively working and building alongside an education building actively teaching and learning. So a whole process is set up to ensure that their safety is paramount and that the building be done with the utmost consideration for the continuation of education during the standard school year. I don't know if you remember this, but when we were doing this middle school, we actually consolidated, because we were switching from, we were tearing down the old one, they were moving in here, and so we consolidated February and March break. Do you guys remember this? It was actually pretty amazing that the community was willing to do this, and it was a tremendous help to our team as we were moving in furniture and getting ready to leave that other building. And so we had two weeks where we could be in the building, working. So little things like that can also come into play when it comes to logistics. Steve, is there anything else?
Well, just due to the nature of what we're proposing here, on a very simplistic level, there's a new addition that could be built at the end of the building that could be built with minimal disruption to the education program, because those are spaces that are needed but not critical. I mean, building that would not impact the usage of spaces inside the building. So I think, you know, it could potentially be that that addition could be So I think, you know, it could potentially be that that addition could be built over the course of the school year. Then the second piece of this expansion does require interior renovations as well. And so over the course of, you know, probably two summers, maybe the first summer, some interior renovations could be done. And then during the school year, the addition could be built. And then the next summer, when school is out, the finishing renovation could be done to create the interconnection between the existing building and the new building. It's a very simplistic way of looking at it, but it would basically, we could, it could potentially be done over two summers and one school year. With, you know, again, as Ann described, these sorts of projects take a lot of coordination and discussion with the school, the staff, as well as the contractor, just to work out the logistics, and above all, to make it safe.
Yeah, go for it.
One thing I'm seeing from looking at it, we mentioned the pre-K portion that's inside the high school, is I know that there was just a brief posit of the idea of universal PK and what that would look like. That is clearly a no-go under the current plan. Because, one, there's no way of expanding it, or wasn't addressed at the high school. And also, that is pretty clear that the high school enjoys having the preschool there for the utilization of the learning of the high school students. Am I correct in kind of reading it that way? Because that is an active choice that we would be making here with this.
I think we tried to do two things. One, just independently ask for an evaluation of the current space, right? Saying, let's not talk about, you know, program in terms of where it could be, but where it is now, what are the limitations, or what needs to be addressed? I think in all of this, and I think that's why we started to look and make connections between program goals and delivery. You have to make choices. That, we certainly know that the high school would benefit from additional space. I think logically, the next work that I would suggest in this partnership is to conduct the similar kind of space audit around program delivery and spatialization in the high schools, so we have a complete picture. Because I would say to you, it is about choices, but the advantage of relocating this program with possibly thinking of a different, I would say, purpose of expanded universal pre-K, that would require significantly more space. That kind of ties to the idea of a two-floor, going from four additional classrooms or six to, you know, certainly doubling that relative to space. So it is about looking at the trade-offs relative to what the experience is now between secondary-level students being present with our earliest learners. But also the limitations that come of it in both ends, both for the high school, for adequate space, and saying that this program really can't change where it's currently located because to expand it, there needs to be a lot of rethinking about internal space. Does that answer the question? And that's why we, part of this process was the vision piece to this, where we sat in room and said, what would, or what is the potential of a UPK program that is full day, that could be, you know, the enrollment of that could go from now, where it may be less than 40, to possibly 80 or 90, you know, students. And so, and what would be the space needs to deliver that type of program? So that's one idea of many around how program will influence where things are located and the space is required to visualize it.
I just want to add, I thought that it was important to note to this board that in our interview with the pre-K administrator, director, that she did note there were the positive, there were many positives, some negatives, but some positives too, to being located at the high school. And so I felt it was important to share with you, to convey, that she liked it. This is not meant to be a decision. It was really meant to give you the information so that you, as a board, can steer the district accordingly.
This is one that maybe actually David might be the one who would be answering it more, is that I actually, with the design, the expansion going out of the east wing on Moheramit, I was actually somewhat surprised to hear about keeping the common space reflected in there again. Because I was wondering actually about the utilization of that space, considering sound, noise, heating and cooling costs in that space. I was surprised, so if you could address that in the design.
Sure. Gianna, before, I'm sorry, just to clarify for me, are you talking about the wing space?
Yeah, so you're looking at this new design that's over here. The common area. So you've got the west wing common area over here. And then with the new design, you're putting a, more of a special education space within that, and then you're duplicating it newly on the other side. And I was actually surprised by that because my experience was that that space wasn't actually utilized that much. It is absolutely being utilized right now for art. But I had some questions about that, of its utilization, because that fundamentally affects how it was designed.
Sure. I can't speak to the heating and cooling costs. But in terms of utilization, I would say we use both wings constantly. Remove art from the east wing, and it'll be what the west wing is. And in the west wing, you see five to six to sometimes 12 tables being used by students all the time. The project that we just presented today took over the west wing on various days for huge amounts of collaborative work. Our entire first grade was in there for an assembly with Mr. Hall, our librarian, and the classroom teachers for a read aloud and a song having to do with Ladybug books. We've done similar things in the east wing. I would say it really advances the collaborative work that we're doing. There are times in the day when you walk through the wing, and there might be one table being used, but it's really very minimal. In addition, we use it for indoor recess. And I will say that that's not a trivial thing. In all the schools that I've taught in, indoor recess was in your classroom. Because there is no space to gather the whole grade in a space. And indoor recess in your classroom is, in some classrooms, like at your desk. And we have grade-level indoor recess in wings where they are playing and doing as much movement as possible, you know, which is clearly different than outside. So there are lots of reasons why I think our wings are pretty awesome. And I think our staff use them really well. I will say also, working with the architects, as we had this conversation about, what does it look like? And how do you add on? And what happens to, remember, there are classrooms currently there that would have to leave, right? And how, if you didn't do a court, then you'd have this little weird U thing with a courtyard, but you'd have window, it'd be very awkward. And as we were talking about the wings and the consistency of the philosophy at Moheramit and how we use all the spaces, and that students, students spend their life in both wings based on the grades, mirroring the wing became also a really, I think, beautiful design piece. Yeah. Did that answer your question, Gianna?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, please, yeah.
I was curious about the sizing of the new classrooms. Moheramit's classrooms are smaller in general than any of the Mastway classrooms. And particularly, the new corner classrooms would be the smallest classrooms in the building. And so I was curious as to what the limitation was for putting the sort of east exterior wall where it is to not increase those, that square footage in those new classrooms up a bit.
I think what you're asking is, through the work of this addition, could we take the existing corner classrooms and make them bigger? Is that what you're asking?
No. The one on what would be the southeast corner is 872 square feet in the conceptual design. That's the smallest, that's smaller than any of the classrooms that are in the building currently. And it, those buildings, those classrooms are smaller than any classroom at Mastway already. And so, one, what were the constraints for making them the size they are? And then another thought, as we keep going, there are two larger kindergarten classrooms that are over 1,000 square feet. Those are the two largest classrooms in the building. But the other two kindergarten classrooms are smaller. And is there an opportunity to make that wall larger classrooms, which would give equitable kindergarten space in the larger framework or setting? Is that something that, you know, are we interested in that idea? Or, so that's part two of that question. But part one is really, what is the limiting factor on why those classrooms are the size they are?
So I'll answer your second, the second part of that question first, which is the kindergarten. If that's something that the district wanted us to do, we would absolutely look at how we can expand, if we can identify the two, so we can identify the existing two kindergarten classrooms. If you can identify which classrooms you want to be the other two, understanding that the intent is four classrooms per grade, then we could absolutely look at enlarging them, if that's what you would wanted. To go back to the first half of your question, there is no rhyme and reason to that, per se. This is conceptual design. Every classroom should be 900 square feet. So upon drawing this very conceptual floor plan, they were at 900. There is a tug of war and a push and pull when you're sizing and drawing a building. And then at the last, at the very end, you say, oh my gosh, I need to add a restroom. So please do not be hung up on the numbers. Actually, in hindsight, I wish I'd removed them, because it's not something that you should focus on. What we want to show and what we want to convey this evening is the concept and how we got to this concept. And justify the spaces that we're showing in the blue and the orange, the gray, et cetera. So that you understand, like, there is a program list of spaces that is how we got to this conceptual floor plan. And that's what we really want to share with you. It's very astute. Thank you for noticing the typo of the 873. But in, there's, it would not, the intent would not be for it to be the smallest classroom.
If I could, if I could add on to that for a second. So I think one of the unique aspects of how this building is organized and what we've tried to continue with it is the idea of sort of a perimeter ring of general classrooms. And they're all shaded in the same color of light blue here, which means that the arrangement of grade levels in the final version of the building doesn't need to be what it is right now. And so if, you know, kindergarten classrooms, those four classrooms don't necessarily have to be in the same position that they're in right now. And so moving into the next stage of design, that would surely be a topic of discussion about what, you know, with the new, with the building sort of reconfigured in this way, which grade level would be best situated around that perimeter ring? The second thing I just wanted to touch on is, we've done this in a little bit of a vacuum without a real site survey. And we know there's some grading issues on that side of the building. And so we weren't trying to go push the building in that direction outrageously too far, because we do, you know, eventually you do come up to a property line. There is a, you know, a little bit of berm of a hillside there, so there's some excavation. So we were trying to be mindful of that. So again, you know, if, you know, we have the opportunity to advance this design working with all of you, we would obviously get that very detailed site information so we could really kind of start looking at and really pinning down the exact size of the building, how the classrooms are arranged, and the actual real sizes of the classrooms.
And I brought up this diagram just to show you that the colors of the perimeter ring of classrooms, in theory, represent a grade. So in the orange, where you see the existing kindergarten, in this diagram, there are two more kindergarten classrooms to the right. They don't need to be there. They could be flanking it, they could be on the left. That's really up to the school. But the intent of this design was to have, to maintain that ring. But certainly, if a directive was given and you wanted to sort of increase those size and make them know these are dedicated kindergarten classrooms, we could do that.
I was actually, this one, I was curious about. If you go back to the floor plan. The proper, yeah. The existing corner classrooms now both have two entry doors, which I thought was, I was curious if that was just a, it's conceptual design, we need to take one off, or if there was a logical reason for it.
Are you looking at the vestibule?
So if you see where the new learning center, new ERR is, the current existing corner classroom and the opposite one, you can see their existing side doors, but you've also added a door to the hallway right by the existing wall line. So both of those doors now have two classrooms. And I was curious if that was just an overzealous addition of doors, or if there was a reason for it.
Can we point out what she was describing?
It's that classroom.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was definitely an overzealous doors. But the reason for the doors is because when you think about grade level alignment, you think about creating a team environment and a cluster. And so, number one, classrooms should have two doors because of safety. So it would, in good conscience, I should be showing every single one of these classrooms with two doors, and I think I am. But number two, if you have a third grade, and one classroom is in that existing, and then the others are, such as can be seen in, say, the darker green in the lower right-hand corner of this diagram, having the multiple doors just might create easier communications. But to Steve's point, these are such early days. If we have the opportunity to work on this project in earnest and move into the latter design phases, we would sit down and really examine, talk to the teachers, and understand, well, where is the best placement for doors? It sounds trivial, but it's really not, because it's about eyesight, the teachers supervising the kids during their indoor recess, et cetera. And so, and the transparency, how much glass, you know, these kinds of things. The door placement comes in handy. So I appreciate that comment very much.
Are we looking to do a similar conceptual design for the Mastway recommendations?
I think our starting point was Moheramit, based on, it was really focusing on classroom space. But I think equally, when we, when Ann and Steve went through the similar process at Mastway, and we looked at all the dysfunction, the next step would be to say, how do you conceptualize that to address the same deficiencies in a similar way? That's the intention. And I think the part B to this, that we talked about, is how do we then put our attention to the high school and really authorize that similar space utilization programmatic review that I think would be helpful? Because it, I think the idea here is that how do we have all the information? So as we move forward, the board can be strategic in thinking about program, decisions about where programs could be in configurations, or at least have the ability to talk through options. And then also, obviously, the costs and how do we, you know, kind of make decisions about, you know, addressing the bigger, broader capital plan, but pinpoint in the immediacy the two, what I would say, expedient projects that we talked about, is that cafeteria and now additional programmatic space at Mastway. It's equally the expansion of Moheramit and the program work there as well. Did that answer?
I really just wanted yes.
Yes.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Thank you both very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just before we finish, I just wanted to give Dave, if you have any observations, anything comments, since you've been integral to this, you know, effort all along.
Thank you, Duck Chefs. Great job, Novo, thank you very much. I would, if, as we move into looking at a conceptual design for Mastway and maybe programmatic review for the high school, I'd like to throw out, when I look at all of our facilities, probably the building in the greatest state of disrepair is the SAU office. And we haven't talked about that at all. Maybe we should do some type of a programmatic review of it. I mean, we don't serve students on a daily basis in that space, so it probably is less important. But we really should have a completely ADA-compliant space where the public can access the space. And we don't really have that right now. So I think that's another log that kind of needs to get put on the fire for consideration in the future. Thank you.
We can have a discussion about that presentation, or we can move on. Does anybody have any thoughts? Okay, let's move on. Oh, please go ahead.
I have a question. So again, just looking at the budget that we're currently working on in terms So again, just looking at the budget that we're currently working on in terms of what sort of cost, I mean, I know we're not building anything this next year, but in terms of, you know, like these additional, you know, studies or, or the site work or, or anything like that, is there any, would there be a need to put some, you know, include some of that in this budget that we're currently working on?
I guess my first response is that what was helpful is that, as, as you know, in our initial presentation of the budget, Dave had the opportunity to list capital work priorities that really touches on roof repair, replacement, mechanical systems across the district for beginning next summer. And what was important is that the complete plan, the facilities assessment, the audit, reinforced that alignment of the need. And so I would say the starting point for, for the immediate is that Dave has identified those projects that are, you know, health and safety, end-of-life mechanical, obviously roofs that we need to address in the first pass. I think as an extension, as in our upcoming board workshop next week, budget workshop, we should start to talk about really, what does it mean in terms of now that we have this information, in terms of timelines and thinking about next steps, as certainly been presented here discussed. So I agree, Denise, I think we need to start to account for a timeline. We initially, you think about it, four, five months ago, when I arrived, we were talking about breaking ground next summer to expand the Mastway cafeteria, right? We were looking to increase the capital, capital portion of the operating budget to predict that cost and everything that went with it. What we, by pausing and kind of reframing our energy to work on these three projects, we realized that the immediacy of the cafeteria around utilization has given us more time. I would say, how do we take advantage of that time to think through, through whether it's the finance committee, whether we consider a building committee that really is, is making these recommendations, all of that would be important. But then how do we at least consider what would be the next steps in the Maharamit Mastway anticipating the need to do that sooner or later? Because we have to go through the cycling of timeline to say, if we, now what we know about Maharamit, what would be the calendar, the order of way we're thinking about it, then apply those costs in saying fiscal year '26, fiscal year '27, and so forth. I think the lesson learned, and I certainly wasn't a part of this building's construction, is how do you take care, in some ways, front-load some of the things that are strategic, both financially and, but also from a bonding perspective, that may accelerate the process overall and be more efficient in costs.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any school, yeah, thank you, Dr. Shapps. Are there any school board committee updates?
Okay, so the wellness committee met earlier this week, and we kind of were able to do a recap of the community dinner and just how successful that was, and, you know, appreciated all the organizations that came out, and Meredith's group, the food services group, how, what a great job that they had done, and how much they enjoyed doing it. So that was great to hear. They're looking forward to the next one. So the other pieces that we talked about as well were putting together a study group to look at the cell phone usage and consider that information as well. And then we also talked about potentially looking at considerations around messaging related to energy drinks and concerns about kind of safety and just awareness of kind of the dangers of energy drinks. And, you know, people understand the amount of sugar in drinks, but when you have these drinks that also have caffeine in them now, you know, how does that sort of, so just kind of thinking about things like that, reviewing the health and wellness policy again, bringing that back onto the table. So lots of different topics were discussed, kind of a real broad range of things, but we're set to meet again in February as a, like a full wellness group with kind of smaller little spinoffs before that as well.
D E I J met on Monday, and unfortunately, I had to be late to the meeting, and by the time I got there, they had pretty much outlined the whole spring event. So that was great timing, but really some exciting plan and progress. So that was really the focus of the meeting, was just to, to kind of hammer out, looking at a theme of belonging and including some creative expressions from students and different things. So it's still in the planning stages, but it's definitely taking shape.
Sustainability also met last week on the 14th. We're moving forward with the ideas of what the priorities are for this year that also kind of include kind of a multi-step process, where we're looking at our existing sustainability policies, the, our procedure policies that are attached to it, and then in addition, looking at that in comparison to where we are actually now, because a lot of them we are actually doing. And then there's also a comparison to a U N H interns report from, I believe, from 2021, where she had actually gone through a whole bunch of things and delineated things actually pretty precisely about what she at least was thinking about priorities. And so what we decided to do is actually look at those three components that we have, the two policies and then that document, and then look at them and see if they fit within our conceptual framework of what we think is important, what's already been delineated, and how they match together, to be able to see if we need to adjust the policy and also just to evaluate where we currently are. So I thought it was a very productive one because I had some concrete ideas of how to move forward in order to delineate plans and see where we are and where we want to go. So if I missed anything, Suzanne can jump in on this one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just one, also, the policy committee met in our next meeting. We will present, I think, first and read on a number of policies, including some academic policies that will have an impact as well.
Okay, thank you. We have some time now for public comments, if anyone is here for a public comment. Okay, thank you very much. Future meeting dates, November 26th. I'm going to look at the calendar to make sure it's a Tuesday. We'll be meeting at 7:00 P. M. There's a workshop in the library at the high school, not here at the library in the high school. And then our next two meetings are regular meetings in December, the 4th and the 18th. The first meeting, the 4th, is at the library, and the second meeting is back here. At this point, I'm going to make a motion to temporarily adjourn the meeting for the purpose of discussing strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining. I would like to have a second, Heather. And we'll just need a regular vote for this, so all in favor. Okay, thank you.